Published afterwards on the State Assembly website. Can all electronic devices, including mobile phones, be switched off or switched to silent? And for the purpose of the recording and transcript, I'd be grateful for everybody who speaks to ensure that they state their name and role clearly. And for that, we will start with some introductions. I am Deputy Tom Coles and I am the Chair of the Regulation of Care Sub Panel.
I'm Deputy Helen Miles of St Bellard, and I'm a member of the panel.
Deputy Jonathan Reniff also from St Bellard and another member of the panel.
I'm Becky Sherrington, Chief Inspector.
And I'm Nigel Action, I'm Chair of the Jersey Care Commission.
Thank you. And we will be joined later by Deputy Karen Wilson, who is the Vice Chair, but she has let us know that she is running late. And I'll start off by asking if you could outline the roles and responsibilities between the amendments to the care law and the amendments to the regulation and the responsibilities of the Jersey Care Commission.
Becky, do you want to start?
Yes, so there has been a policy intent to regulate the island across all different healthcare sectors. So at the moment, the Jersey Care Commission regulates a certain portion of healthcare on the island. But there's been a policy intent to increase that to include the hospital, ambulance and mental health. So the policy intent has now been written into law and that's what we're working towards.
But you don't, or do you have any involvement in the creating of the law and the amendment law?
No, we were part of the consultation, so the policy leads right the law and we were then consulted on that.
Okay, and but your responsibility in this is that once the law is changed and amended, you then create the regulations by which, or the rules by which these services are regulated?
The rules are written in the law, we then follow the law. So the regulations and then the regulations and standards, so we follow that. We interpret it in how it should, the inspection methodology should be carried out to fulfil those laws.
And that is then the single assessment framework that you published in April 2025?
Yes, that's right.
So I suppose the question is, is what methodology has the Care Commission used to develop this single assessment framework?
So, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, please, yeah.
So the single assessment framework, we looked at all different jurisdictions to look at how they regulate large, complex services. And we decided that actually the Care Quality Commission, which is the UK English regulator, they have a set of standards that we thought were both proportionate and could be applicable to Jersey. So we worked with the Care Quality Commission in the UK to develop that. We've made it so that it is proportionate for Jersey and applicable. So we've amended their set of standards for Jersey.
And sorry Chair, if I could just add a bit of context from, I, I joined the Commission in January of this year. And the work that Becky and the team had been doing in, in developing the framework and the standards was very much against the background of the approach that states of Jersey have taken when the original regulations were implemented, which is through the lens of improvement and not using a single word sort of summary statement, if you like, which, which had been part of the CQC approach. So the work that the team have been doing in preparation for this extension is very much through the, I think, correct approach that states of Jersey have taken for some years now, which is to, to view regulation through the lens of improvement.
And on the, the single assessment framework, how often is that going to be reviewed?
Yet to be decided. We have a set of standards for social care at the moment, which we're reviewing. So that, they were written in 2019 and we've currently reviewed those. So that's been five years afterwards. We have implemented children's social care standards, which we've recently been reviewing because as a regulator ourselves, we're learning as well. So we've learned that actually we probably need to amend those set of standards. So we've done that shorter than a five-year period, we've done that after a two or three-year period. So it depends, it could be two or three years afterwards. Or if we actually feel that there's no amendments needed to be making, then it could be a longer period.
Okay, wonderful. And you mentioned the CQC before, so on that, I'm going to hand over to Deputy Reniff.
Yeah, so the, you've engaged with the CQC as their primary kind of organisation to engage with. Can you provide a little bit more information about that process of engagement? When did it begin? What, you know, what stages did you go through with them?
So we've engaged with them from quite early on, since 2023. We've started our engagement with them, we've had a contract with them. They've recently this year agreed to continue with that engagement with us. So we've got an ongoing relationship with them. I meet with them as part of the Chief Executive Group, there's a regulators forum, which I'm part of. We're the chief execs of different regulators, so Northern Ireland, Scotland, Wales and England, so I'm part of that. But I meet with the head of strategy for the CQC every four months. I also have their contacts, so if we've got any challenges or I want to raise a query with them, I meet with her or via email. So we have regular engagement and it's a really positive relationship.
And in terms of devising the single assessment framework, what was that process? I mean, did you come up with something and send it to them? Did they send you things? I mean, what was that, what was that process?
They provided their single assessment framework to us. We had a standard writer with us at the time. So he went through each of those different standards to see whether that would be applicable to Jersey. We amended that, we shared that with the board, so we have a, governed by a board. So each board meeting, I would send a revised version for comments to the board. And then we went out to consultations, we went to public consultation for the single assessment framework too. Once we've received comments about it, I then sent it back to the CQC to see if they had any comments. They've actually been benefiting from our learning too. And they've commented that actually there are a lot of things that they're learning from us. So they've understood what the public consultation has fed back and what changes we've made about that. They're at the current stage at the moment of reviewing their own single assessment framework. And as I said, they've also commented that they've learnt from some of our public consultations as well, so.
In terms of the single assessment framework we've ended up with, as opposed to the one they have, can you single out a couple of kind of key differences?
We've put in quite a bit about duty candor, we've put about visiting. I wouldn't be able to specifically put any other ones on that for you, but I can come back to this group now, I can clarify that for you.
Has the, I mean, the CQC has had some well documented issues recently. Have they impacted at all on the, the, the work you've been doing with them?
I think it's really, I think whenever a regulator goes through a challenging period, I think you need to learn from that. We are a learning organisation too, so it's really important that we learn from other challenges and we reflect on what they've been through and we have done that. I think a lot of their challenges have been around digital. So they've implemented a large digital project, which I think providers found very difficult to engage with. So they've recognised that that has caused huge problems for them. They've also had a lot of operational issues in getting to their inspector's schedule and meeting that inspector's schedules. Again, that's something really important to us, that we make sure we're able to do that. And also, public trust in the regulator as a result of those operational challenges has been affected. So I think, you know, for us, we've reflected that we absolutely monitor our inspection schedule. We do that on a monthly basis and I report to the board about making sure that we are complying with our inspector's schedule and we're on schedule for that. I think it's really easy to get tied up in a digital project. So we've tried to make sure that our inspection methodology is simple, that providers understand it and it's not going to tie them in knots. So we haven't put huge digital systems in place. And I think also being open and transparent is really important and that's particularly important on a small island, where public trust is really important. So we publish all of our inspection reports, we publish our agenda, our minutes. All of our documents and reports are available and we do regular comms as well. So people understand the importance of our independence and our transparency. So there are lots of learning. It's also important to learn from international regulators as well. And we're part of an international regulators group, which includes Malta, Latvia, Estonia, Singapore, to understand whether they've had challenges and things. So we're part of an international group too.
Looks like we've. And just keeping going. How is the JCC managing preparations for the proposed changes under the draft law? Alongside all the challenges you've documented, you know, in terms of engaging with the CQC?
We feel well prepared. It is something that we are taking very seriously. We understand that this is something very important to islanders and to ministers. So we've got a project plan. That project plan is green. We understand the things that we've still got to prepare for and where we currently are, but we, we feel well prepared.
You've talked about the regulators that you've engaged with. Are there any that, I mean, engaged with can mean many things. Have you learnt anything from them? You've detailed quite a lot about what your engagement with the CQC has been. But what has been the kind of learning points, if you like, that have come from engagement with other regulators?
Well, I mean, one of the first things I think is what other regulators have said to, to us about what the approach that states of Jersey has taken in, in embedding regulation through this, this lens of improvement and also not trying to refine down into a single word summary finding.
So that's not saying failing, succeeding, whatever?
Yes, and, and it really is. And, and I think we've seen really good evidence of the, the other thing in terms of the, what you might call phasing of the approach is that Becky and the team have now got a, a, a very large kind of catalogue, if you like, of, of inspection activity and can demonstrate that the approach has, has led and supported improvement over that time. So I think in terms of the confidence and trust that Becky talked about, which is so important for members of the public, for staff, frankly, working in services and for elected representatives. I think that that catalogue of, of, of activity is building that trust on Jersey in preparation for, for these next steps. And certainly, again, as, as Becky has said, she and the team interfacing with these other regulators, both in the, what you might call the home nations and further afield. I, I am very, very pleasantly surprised and get some assurance of not just the fact that there is this curiosity among colleagues on Jersey, Becky and the team as to, you know, are there things that we can learn? But it is lovely in that exchange that people have, have said, actually, there are some things that, that Becky and the team are doing, which are really, you know, really very good practice.
Have, have you sought specific feedback from other regulators other than the CQC? For the single assessment framework, for example?
We haven't consulted with other regulators about our work on the single assessment framework. As I said, we have work, I am in consultation with the other UK regulators, so they understand our direction of travel, they understand our plans and no one's raised any significant concerns over that. I have to say that most standards and most inspection methodologies are based on a broad theme. So we are following that broad theme.
Can I just clarify one aspect, which is islanders who are treated off-island, they will fall under the regulation of services provided elsewhere?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, right, morning, apologies for the slight delay. Just coming to the standards and the guidance and the single assessment framework itself. When you published it in April, clearly you'd set out how you actually wanted that framework to look. Do you anticipate before the law comes into force, any adapt, adoptions or changes to that framework at all?
No, that's not our intent. We've done a public consultation, we received feedback from a wide range of people, including charities, the public and the provider organisations. So we have amended that and that's now published and we don't intend to change that.
Okay, that's fine. In terms of the, the feedback that we've had, obviously we spoke to a whole range of stakeholders. One of the things that we received from the BMA was that the regulation framework needed to be backed up, needed to be backed up in order to enhance public confidence by robust systems, adequate staffing and adjustment with national standards. Do you believe that the existing systems in place within healthcare Jersey and the data used to inform those systems are sufficiently robust?
So can I start the response to that, if I may? So Becky and the team and increasingly myself, since I've started, we've been doing a lot of engagement with colleagues in Health Services Jersey. And you will all be aware of a number of the external reports that have, have been undertaken over recent years, many of which have pointed to deficiencies in just those areas. I think one of the things that has been really impressive in, in the engagement that Becky and the team have done that I've joined more recently is the, the considerable amount of work that Healthcare Services Jersey have been doing in preparation for the, the extension of the regulations that, you know, we, we hope will, will be put in place. And, and the engagement that we've been having, both at an executive team level and last week, and the week before, we, we went to the senior medical staff meeting. It is evident that, that that work has begun. Is it perfect? No, no system is ever perfect. And of course, what, what we will be able to do on behalf of the people of Jersey, on behalf frankly of the, the teams in Healthcare Services Jersey to see how they're doing on that journey and for elected representatives, is be able to hold that mirror up as the independent regulator to see where on that journey colleagues and the service more generally is. And so I, I think at this point in time, could, could any of us answer that question? I think would be very difficult, but that is one of the, the real values, I think, of, of the extension of regulation to allow all of those groups, particularly people who are going to be accessing and using those services, to understand where on that journey people are. From our, from our impression and engagement so far, we can see really positive change on behalf of those colleagues, you know, understanding that, that all of those areas are important.
So, so I think the short answer to that is there's still a bit of a way to go in terms of systems and processes.
Well, I think that, that will be one of the really key parts of the assessment that, that Becky and the team will make on behalf of the Commission.
How do you respond to the BMA's views?
I, I, so the BMA obviously have their view and we are, we are really trying to, through Becky's team, you know, work with the regulations that will be set up under the law and, and we will do our job as the independent regulator.
Do you think that creates any barriers to you doing the kind of regulatory work that you need to do if you're, if BMA are saying these things on behalf of the workforce that they're representing?
So we, as the regulator and certainly Becky, as the, as the operational team, work really closely with the management of the, of Healthcare Services Jersey in this particular instance, as we do with all of the other regulated providers. And our, our regulator relationship is with them and then through the assurance that, that the Board of Commissioners has on the work that Becky and the team do.
Thank you. Do you believe that the proposals under the law provide or enhance systemic clarity for health and care providers in Jersey?
Absolutely.
Can you tell us in what way?
This is probably the strongest argument for regulation. At the moment, we regulate sectors on the island and they reflect back to us. It gives them a framework to operate. It demonstrates to them how they can run safe, efficient caring services. So it gives them a model to operate on. So the social care sector reflect that back to us that pre-regulation, there was nothing to work against. They can now demonstrate that they're really providing safe, efficient care. Children's social work services are now regulated, there is a set of standards which they can operate against and they can demonstrate that they're providing that type of care. CAMHS, again, they've got a set of standards in which they operate and can start to demonstrate that they're improving. So it absolutely demonstrates a business model and how they can operate. The healthcare Jersey has started, said that they've started to work against those set of standards. They're starting to reflect in their quality governance meetings, how they are meeting those standards. So it's, it definitely gives a framework to operate for services.
And are there any particular areas where you think there need to be changes to actually make further improvements?
We haven't begun regulating those service areas, it's very difficult for me to make comment on that.
But in terms of the systemic clarity, I mean, obviously you're going to be regulating hospital services and that will clearly have a connection with all of those other services that you've just talked about. So do you foresee any changes to any of those services as a result of regulating HSJ or HCJ, whatever it's called now?
Do I think social care will change? I think that the care that is provided generally in social care is very good and we have lots of evidence of good practice. It's difficult for me to articulate without regulating the hospital, the impact that that will have on social care. My only presumption is that it will be benefit, it will be beneficial for islanders and people in receipt of care. So, but being able to evidence in which way that will impact is difficult at this point. I don't know whether you've got anything?
No, I think that's right. And in terms of some of the outcomes, so Becky talked about, for example, children's services inspections. And, and what was really interesting was that we, we think in the, in the work and the reports and of the regulator activity that we, we can see and the service themselves would say that there are improvements that have been made, which is clearly, clearly what, what we're trying to achieve. But one of the unintended consequences of, of, of that activity, we heard about when we talked to the Senior Medical Staff Committee, in that some specialised staff, the, the service were trying to recruit. And, and one of the candidates referred specifically to the report that showed the improvements in those services as being a real factor as to why that colleague wanted then to apply to work on Jersey. So, so I think having that independent and transparent regulatory view of services is something that can give confidence, not just, you know, to the people using the service and, and the staff currently and of course elected representatives, but, but there are other potential benefits to that transparent, independent view being there of services and which can seem intangible, but over time, we hope will continue to drive some of those improvements. It's really, we, we feel that was a really interesting observation.
Sure. I suppose in one sense, I think what you've done is through your incremental approach, you're starting to build up a culture, aren't you? So I would imagine that will probably follow through to HCJ as well. Can you just tell us how you manage some of the regulator activities that take place outside of Jersey and other jurisdictions?
That would be beyond our scope, so the regulation is for islanders and receiving care here.
How's it going to work if somebody is initially cared for here and then, you know, transferred for a specialist placement? Say for example, somebody who's going to be in a mental health placement?
So we would expect that there'd be a contract in place. So, but the person receiving care, we would have no oversight of that. Because most jurisdictions now have regulated healthcare. England, Scotland and Wales are all regulated, so the person would be in a place of care that's regulated by a different regulator.
And what about some of your, all the, your sort of connections with other islands like Isle of Man and Guernsey? Do you foresee any sort of overlap through joint inspections or joint regulatory activity on specific things there at all?
We have had discussions. They're very early discussions, but the amendments in the law give us the possibility of working with other regulators. I think as long as that doesn't impact on our schedule, so I've mentioned that we need to make sure we keep up to date with our schedule, so as long as it doesn't impact on our schedule and our own activity, I think there is some real benefit in working with other jurisdictions. The Isle of Man have a secure children's home, there's possibilities we could work with the Isle of Man and do joint inspections. We're also quite experienced as regulator now and Guernsey are looking at the possibility of introducing regulation. Again, that's quite early on, but we have been providing advice to Guernsey colleagues. So I don't think it's without the bumps of our stability. We work with other island jurisdictions. That would benefit us and also benefit other islanders potentially.
Thank you, Becky.
So, because that's part of the amendments in, in the law is to open up the ability for the Jersey Care Commission to be a regulator in other jurisdictions. So at the moment for you, that is literally just opening the door to then, to view what you can do next, whether or not it's something you want to or capable of doing, will come further down the line?
Yes, and the example has been that secure children's home. It would be an opportunity, I think, for us to do that jointly, look at how we regulate and potentially working together as an inspectorate. The law has never had that in place to be able to do that. So this was the opportunity to put that in the new amendments.
Just finally from me in terms of, can you confirm whether the responsibilities of the Commission within the draft law proposals have been clarified specifically regarding the responsibilities of clinical and non-clinical staff?
Could you just repeat that?
Yeah. Are you able to confirm the responsibilities within the draft law proposals? If the, there's been clarification specifically regarding the responsibility of clinical and non-clinical staff?
In terms of the registered manager and registered provider?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, the policy intent is that that's changed. Currently, the registered provider is the chief officer. We understand that there have been discussions around that and the law has now been amended so that the chief officer wouldn't, would be the delegated person, but the registered provider would be the minister. And we understand that's the new policy intent.
How does that give you as a regulator the kind of granularity that you need about the service and the knowledge of the service?
We're clear that that person would be the accountable person, that if we ever refer to the Attorney General for a significant breach, it would be the minister that would be the registered provider, we're now very clear on that. They do have delegated powers to give that to a chief officer, so we would also register them and then they would go through the same registration process. There is also a registered manager and we would be clear and we would work with the services to make sure we would have registered managers as well, who we would have operational dealings with as well. So although it changes, we're very clear on who, who we would be working with.
Is, is there some sort of framework or accountability framework laid out as to if a member of the public was interested to know some of the detail around this, where they could go and look?
We will be publishing guidance, which we could, all our guidance is on our website. So we'll be giving guidance to the service provider on who should be registering and what we, what that accountability looks like. So in answer to that question, yes, that will be available on our website.
Thank you. Thank you. I just had a question about pharmacies and prescribing in particular because the new regulations will require that those services are effective, safe and appropriate. Do you think that the proposals under the draft law cover all aspects of prescribing in all areas where prescribing takes place?
I mean, at the moment pharmacies, community pharmacies aren't in this regulation. It would be the pharmacy within the hospital. So we're quite clear, our, our responsibility for that.
Do you think that goes far enough?
What, in what way?
Well, at the moment, the minister's only bringing the regulations for the hospital pharmacy and yet we know a, a particular example is the cannabis clinics, for example. So there will be members of HCJ, employees of HCJ that prescribe cannabis out, out with the, the pharmacy. So I just wondered if you had any views at this point on what's missing from the draft regulations in terms of prescribing?
So, well, if, if I may, so each of those prescribers is regulated by their own professional regulator. And I think from the perspective of Jersey Care Commission, for those actions that individual healthcare professionals take in their role as a healthcare professional, it would fall upon their professional regulator to regulate their clinical, in this case prescribing activity. And, and we, we, we would expect that, that that, that would still apply.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't take complaints or queries over private prescribing at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you.
How does that work then if somebody has been within HCJ and then they get moved to their community? And then they get moved to their community GP who continues the prescribing programme?
So, so it's very, so one of the previous roles that I held in NHS England was the high level responsible officer, um, supporting the GMC's, um, uh, decisions on revalidating doctors. So the, the professional regulation of a doctor who prescribes sits with the GMC. Um, and so it, and that, that is really clear and long established and that would remain the case. So, um, as, as far as Jersey Care Commission is concerned, that, that individual accountability for a professional who is regulated in their own clinical activity, that would remain.
Just, just, if we could just tease this out, because it is an area of contention. If you as a regulator were inspecting pharmacy services in the hospital and you found there to be inappropriate prescribing in the hospital pharmacy on cannabis prescribing, for example. Wha- what would you do? Could you just explain what you would do as a regulator?
So again, the, the individual prescriber bears a professional responsibility. Um, but in terms of the running of, um, so, um, there was a really interesting, and forgive me, this is, is, is linked. So there was a maternity inquiry that was done by a chap called Dr Bill Kirk up in Morecambe Bay. And he very clearly described in his recommendations in a way that I think answers your question, that there are individual accountabilities for those that do the prescribing or treat patients. But equally, in the, in a hospital setting, there are then accountabilities for those that, that lead and run the hospital in terms of understanding the activity that's, um, taking place and any deviation from what would be accepted as normal. And then for taking steps, um, to rectify that. So in terms of the Jersey Care Commission, obviously there is that individual, um, professional accountability which still applies. But in terms of the work that Becky and the team would then do in the hospital, that one part of the assessment of, um, in the regulations will be of the leadership, the well-led, um, part of, of the organisation, which would be to look at some of those governance, um, links and how those work in, in hospital.
And would you see that some of those, um, responsibilities in terms of the organisational focus? Because I accept the independent prescribing position. But is an organisational focus that you would, um, have any concerns about in relation to general pharmaceutical services in the hospital?
Again, I think that's very difficult to make an assumption about because we aren't regulating the hospital, um, yet. So I think it would be only fair to make a judgement about that once we've regulated, um, and inspected.
Okay, so you don't make any special provision for that in the standards at all?
What pharmacy?
Uh, in relation to cannabis prescribing in the hospital pharmacy?
No.
Okay.
Can I, um, return to Article four of the draft law, which is the shifting to the minister becoming the accountable, the accountable provider? Um. I, I wanted to sort of get a sense of, uh, why that was done. And in particular, it's referenced that this is more common elsewhere. But, um, why, why was it appropriate for Jersey?
I mean, it's a policy intent. Um, we followed the policy.
Okay.
So, um, we haven't driven that policy intent.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that that is unmanageable though. I think as long as we have somebody who's a registered provider, we're clear that their accountability lies. Um, we will be able to, um, enforce that.
Have you though looked at whether it's, say, for example, mirrors the situation in the UK?
It does. Again, um. The CQC have a registered provider. Um. That is normally an accountable officer, um, but we will have a minister. I, I don't think it's, um, unenforceable. I think it is clear. Um.
Sorry, are you?
To manage that.
Are, are you saying that in the UK, a minister has the same responsibility in the UK as what we're proposing here?
In the UK, in England, it would be the, the chief exec.
Okay, so we're, we're doing something slightly different in these regulations then to the UK. I, I guess from the point of view of the, the public, um, what would, what's the difference, if you like? Uh, you know, let's say, for example, legal action needs to be taken. Um, what, what is the implication for the public of those two different paths?
Um, I think for the public, they want to know that there is somebody accountable, there is a, a registered person. Um, and we would be registering a person, um, and people would be aware that that would be the minister.
But does it have an implication in terms of seeking compensation and so on? You know, you're seeking compensation from a, a body, an accountable officer. The, the, the reference is that this would protect chief officers from any personal liability. But presumably it shifts personal liability towards the minister in that case.
I mean, I don't know whether, I don't know if that's been tested, whether someone would make a claim against person after we've taken legal action. Um. I mean, the processes we would refer, and I have to just clarify, this would be the worst, this case scenario. This is very, this isn't something that we do. Um, our role isn't to make referrals to the attorney general. And we have an escalation enforcement policy. We try and make sure that this is proportionate. But in the worst case scenario, um. It would be a referral to the attorney general. The attorney general would decide whether the, um, the evidence test is made and whether it's in the public interest. Would then make a decision about whether it goes through to prosecution and then the prosecution would be made against the, the minister.
Okay. I think we probably need to seek some more clarification on where that's, where that, what that means in practice. The minister is a corporation soul and, you know, and so one assumes that they are acting, they're being held responsible in that capacity. But, um, but I think some clarification on that would probably be, be useful.
Yeah, we'll push that. But I think that's, I think we'll take that with the minister for drafting his, his regulations.
Can I just ask, just to build on, on that? What, how, how as a regulator, do you understand the role of the chief executive of the public service?
They are.
In terms of, in terms of, of the regulatory framework? They are the, they are the accountable officer in all of this. And then the delegations you're proposing are through various different departments to be registered managers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the minister's role is to have the overall accountability um, for how the chief executive is fulfilling their accountabilities. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Sorry, can I just, just clarify there? You said the chief executive of the public service?
Yes.
Public health service.
Well, you said.
Public, public service.
Public service.
Well, it would be applicable to children's services too. So it would be for all government regulated services.
So the minister would delegate that authority to the public service, not to the chief officer of the health service or the chief officer of the children's service?
The chief officer for the, the service. I mean, there's no alternative.
Well, the public service.
No, so the, not the chief exec of the public service, it would be the chief officer for the service for healthcare. So Tom Walker, for example.
That, that's what I was just trying to clarify. So, so, so I think, sorry, Deputy Wilson.
No, no, please, please do.
I think Deputy Wilson's question then says, so where does the chief executive of the public service, the head of the civil service, sit within, um, these regulations and this framework?
Well, the, my understanding is that it's the, um, minister would be the registered provider and he, he would delegate that responsibility to the chief officer for that operational service.
For, for healthcare Jersey. So the, the, the reason we're asking is obviously the head of the public service, the chief executive of the public service is the employer. So we've just seen a, a recent case where, as it is the chief executive that has had to go and represent the public service in, in a prosecution.
I'm only following the policy. I'm describing to you my, my understanding of the, the way in which the regulations have been written.
Just, just trying to clarify.
Yeah. So however it's written, I then enact. Um, so as you mentioned, it might be.
So that's a further area for us to clarify. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Um, okay, we're just going to move on now, Becky, if that's okay. We're going to do, um, ask some questions about the registration of, of services. Um. In practice, how do you expect that the JCC will make its final determinations about the subcategories of services provided by each service provider? So it's regulated activities effectively. You mentioned, um, earlier, I think, something about it would be broad themes. Um, could you just give us a little bit more detail around how you see the, the categorisation of regulated activities? And who will be doing that?
So, um, we have an inspection handbook, which we'll be publishing once the ministers have agreed the regulation of care law. We have considered, do we publish that before the debate? But we've decided that actually, um, some of that debate might impact on our inspection methodology potentially. So we'll be publishing that once the law, um, is debated. Um, but the inspection handbook, um, describes that we will be splitting the services up. Um, rather than going in and doing the hospital all in one go. Um, we will be portioning groups. So for example, um, surgery, um, mental health, um, medicine. So there will be different subcategories of the hospital, which allows us to go in different phases. So one year we'd go in and do one particular, so it might be maternity, um, and women's services. Next it might be surgery, next it would be medicine. So we will be going in, so there are six different groups. And that's articulated in our inspection handbook.
Okay, the, the question here asks, um, how will you distinguish between the main services and the subcategories? Um, at, at each of the providers?
So in our inspection handbook, it's got the, um, groups that we'll be looking at. And then underneath that, the subcategories that are, um, part of that, um, inspection. So, um, I can share that with scrutiny prior to this, I mean, handbook publication, if that would be helpful.
That would, yeah. So just to test this a little bit, in terms of, um, let's say, for example, you just categorised maternity, mental health, surgery. Let's say you have some standards around looking after the physical healthcare aspects of somebody with a mental health issue. How, how will that work?
So we've got the, so we've got the single assessment framework, which is the broad framework in which we expect all services to follow. Underneath that are service-specific requirements. So, um, those haven't been published yet. Um, we've been working with the services to finalise those. Um, we'll be publishing those at the point in which we, um, publish the inspection handbook. But those service-specific requirements detail each of those different aspects. So for example, the physical health needs of somebody who's detained in a mental health facility, those type of areas. So we've got service-specific requirements for each different, of those different areas.
And how will the, um, inspection cover scenarios like, um, somebody who has a mental health problem actually receiving care in the acute hospital?
So, um. They all interlink. I mean, the single assessment framework provides an inspection framework for regardless of your, um, your reason for your admission really. I mean, it should be these, are you safe? Is the care effective? Is it caring? Is it well-led? So regardless of the diagnosis, it should be about the, um, your outcome, um, in that setting.
Okay. Um, in terms of the, uh, the nature of a large service, how, how do you define it? How, how will we know what a large service is and what small service is?
In what way would you describe that?
Well, in terms of, um, it says in the Regulation Amendment Law, large services such as hospital and government social work services consist of several subcategories of service. Each of will, in practice, have its own manager. I think that that's what you said. So, so how are you defining large services in, in that respect? Is, is a large service children's services? Or is, um, a large service, um, social care services? Or, or is a large service a mental health service? We're just trying to understand how you've organised your definitions around what a large service looks like. And then to, to be able to track the way in which you've made the decisions around subcategorisation.
I mean, I think that's there to differentiate between a large complex service and also what we currently regulate. So at the moment, we could currently regulate single entities, which, um, aren't that hugely complex. And we're now going to be regulating the hospital ambulance and mental health, which would be, have to be subcategories. So I can share with you how we define which of those different areas of service are within a large complex service. So I can give you that, I can share that with you and.
So is the large complex service the hospital?
Yep.
And then the definition around how you've subcategorised into large services, mental health, ambulance and hospital-based care, is, is.
That's right.
Is that what you're describing? Okay, all right. Do you believe that the, the departments within the hospital may be regarded as a standalone service under these proposals at all?
Repeat that question.
Do, do you believe that there are departments within the hospital that may be regarded as standalone services under the proposals?
Well, mental health is one. Um. I mean, we've categorised it. You've got mental health services. Underneath that, there will be categories. And then the hospital underneath that, the different divisions. And then ambulances, it's standalone service.
Okay. In terms of the, um, while the law will allow for the registration of multiple managers, it's, it's your decision, obviously, um, as to whether it's appropriate to register multiple managers, um, in each specific case. Under what circumstances might a provider have multiple registered managers?
So they might want to register, for example, um, surgery, medicine, um, young, women and young children. So they might want to register a manager for each of those services. Alternatively, they might want to register a manager just for the hospital and one for ambulance and one for mental health.
And how soon will it be that we will know who and what that looks like?
So once we've published our guidance on the responsibilities of the registered provider, the responsibility of the registered manager, um, and our expectations of that, we will then work with the service to then, um, register those registered managers for those services.
How many are you anticipating?
I'm anticipating, um, three. But we haven't had huge conversations, detailed conversations with the registered, um, provider at the moment. So that's something that we do need to discuss with them, but we're writing our guidance on that for them.
Okay. Um, in, coming to the, um, question about, um, the level of seniority for those registered managers um, for large healthcare services, um, wha- what's, what's your view in terms of the level of seniority that we're talking about?
We would expect senior levels, so directors. So for example, the director of mental health services, a chief nurse, so somebody who's senior within that executive leadership team.
Okay. And what safeguards do you believe will be required to ensure that the process of determining those, uh, managers doesn't lead to inconsistencies across the, um, provision of care?
Um, well, they've got senior accountability for the delivery of operational services. So, um, that's within their own accountability. We would, um, register them on that basis.
So you wouldn't foresee them to be clinical staff in this? They would be management staff?
No, and that is a difference with social care, for example, where you have a nursing home. You've got the registered provider and then you've got a manager who's probably not, um, as senior as a director of mental health services. But as Karen's mentioned, the miss mentioned, um, these are complex, um, large services. So we would expect that seniority to be in place.
Is, is there an issue about how you get ownership of this agenda if it's going to be at too senior a level? You know, there are very, some very capable, competent senior clinicians in there. Is, is there a reason why we're not actually asking those to, to take on this responsibility at all?
I think that's a really good question and it's a debate we've been having ourselves. The, um, and I think there's risks and benefits in either way. Your risk though is then you're taking out the executive leadership team who do have operational responsibility for the delivery of those services. Um, and if you go to a lower level, but as you say, they have a lot of experience, um, and a lot of, um, authority. Um, you've taken out that, that executive, um, responsibility though.
In terms of the expectation about the role of the registered manager, um, how do you think the scope of control? the scope of control and autonomy will be monitored around that in the hospital?
The autonomy of the registered manager? Well, they have seniority in there at the moment, have autonomy for decision-making with designing services, delivering services, monitoring performance. So I would argue that at the moment, they have great amount of autonomy.
So if I might try and interpret, I think, what you're saying. I mean, what we talked about earlier was that part of the regulator activity that Becky and the team will do will be to explore the governance within each of these providers, as the team currently do in a small, medium or indeed large organisation. Part of the test, I think, for a large complex organisation is to, and picking up, I think, on your point, was about clinical involvement in this. And if you look at the executive team in the organisation, they do have very senior clinical colleagues within that team. And so testing the governance throughout the organisation will really be exploring how those, we often talk about them as triumvirates, the operational, senior nursing midwifery, allied health professional and medical teams, work together at each of those different levels to make sure that, you know, the operation is being run smoothly and safely and effectively. So the regulator activity that's set out by Becky, that, as I say, we'll share, goes right from that frontline, hands-on, retrieving people, right the way through the governance and structure of the organisation. So I think a part of the issue that you talk about in terms of where those different levels lie is something that, once we move into the next stage with the provider, and as Becky said, she's already been talking to them about that, will be to define where in that structure those things sit. But they are part of a governance structure that Becky and the team will be assessing in terms of not only what it looks like, but more importantly, perhaps, about how that functions.
Do you think that if you were to maybe make some recommendations about the level of seniority or the level of clinical engagement, that that would be appropriate, first of all? And also, do you think there is a different way to actually get better engagement from the frontline in terms of taking those accountabilities and responsibilities?
It's a really, really good question. It's one of the things that I think we've been very impressed with in, certainly, as I say, I've only been involved since January, but picking up on work that Becky and the team had already been doing together with the team. What we're already seeing is that there are really, I think, quite encouraging signs of that clinical accountability in terms of engagement with things like national clinical audit programmes, et cetera, which are part of the demonstration of, you might say, how good am I at what I'm supposed to be doing? You know, how well are we working as a team on this? What are we doing this year that's going to help us be better at this next year? And I think we're already beginning to see some of that activity taking place, which I think feeds into part of what you mentioned. And it's really important that that happens with clinical leadership at all levels. In fact, not just clinical leadership, the leadership at all levels. And that's the bit of how that governance and triangle then works that Becky and the team will be able to test. But as I say, it's really hard to know how impactful that's being at this time, as Becky said a couple of times, until, you know, she and the team are able to look in. But certainly from the engagement that we've been doing, that's, that looks to be what they're working on.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I was going to ask you how you think it differs from the expectations of registered managers in other healthcare settings. I don't know if you want to add any more to that.
I mean, I think there is something about the complexity, there's no question. And, you know, as Becky said, you know, a number of the services that fall under the current scope of regulation are relatively well-defined. Having said that, some of the other services that have fallen under regulation up to this point are more complex. And so I think, as I said, I think the preparation phase for what, you know, will happen hopefully next year, I think, is one that the team have been, have been working on very carefully and I think effectively so far. And I think the preparation work that's been done, certainly that I've been involved in over this year, has been really thoughtfully put together for that complexity. So, yeah.
Okay. Becky, have you got anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell us what, or do you feel there's enough local expertise available for the position of the registered manager's role? And have you been involved in any training in relation to this role at all?
We haven't. We haven't issued the guidance on it. It has obviously changed. The amendments have recently changed to reflect, as you say, the differences that were previously there. So we haven't done that, but we will be working with the registered provider and managers to talk around our guidance, et cetera. So we will be having conversations with them once it's agreed.
And when do you expect the arrangements to be clarified and confirmed by?
Well, once the amendments are agreed, so once the debate, once the panel has gone through your process, and then obviously, once the amendments are agreed by all states' members.
Okay. And what's your expectation of the timeframe that we're working to?
My current understanding is that the law will be debated in November, so after November's debate.
And you'll be ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just going to build on from that, because the law provides a six-month transitional period for these managers to then be in place. So your guidance will be public, is going to be ready to be published once it's approved within the assembly. And then, so they'll have six months from that point to then affirm the managers and the details from there.
Yes, we'll be working, I mean, we have been working with the services closely. So since 2023, we've been working with the services to discuss, for example, our philosophy. So it started around what our philosophy inspection is. It's not here to catch people out, it's proportionate, it's to be transparent and to improve standards. So we've been working with them about understanding what regulation is. Then we've started to discuss, for example, the single assessment framework, how we've thought that the inspection methodology may be implemented. So we've been having conversations with the executive leadership team, with the consultants, with others around how we will actually inspect. So that will ramp up once the debate has gone ahead and once the law is enacted. We will then do some detailed comms for both the public, also for those that are currently regulated as well, because there will be some small changes for them, and also for the service provider on how we'll inspect.
Okay, wonderful. So moving on, more around, so this question comes from about the commission's ability to suspend larger service providers. And that generally, the report for the amendment law says it would not generally be appropriate for the commission to suspend a large service provider. So how will you determine the proportionality of decision to suspend a care provider in this scenario?
My understanding is that's been put in, because we've had a recent case in the court where we had an individual care worker that we took action against. The law was clarified in the Royal Court. We suspended that person because we were reflecting the concerns that the NMC were investigating, and they suspended her. So we reflected that as well, suspended her. The powers were clarified that we didn't have the power to suspend, we only had the, we could only cancel her registration. In my view, that would have been disproportionate, and we should have only been able to suspend it, like the UK's regulator had done. So my understanding, that's been put in place in terms of the learning from that case.
So that's going to apply to all service providers that are regulated by yourselves, or is it?
We can already, we can already suspend and or register cancellation of the provider.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to some points around complaints. So the law clarifies circumstances in which the commission may investigate specific complaints brought against a regulated service. What preparations have the Care Commission undertaken in relation to the management of complaints it may receive following the adoption of the draft law?
Do you want me to turn to this? This is something that could quite quickly overwhelm us. So our role as a regulator is to go in and inspect. It isn't, our role isn't to become the public ombudsman. It isn't there to go in and investigate every complaint. So this is something that we picked up with the policy team, that we thought that it needed real clear clarification, so that Ireland has understood our role and wouldn't be set up, we would be set up to fail in their eyes. So it is quite clear now that we aren't there to investigate individual complaints. We aren't there as a public ombudsman. But we do have a role, though, in certain cases, where we feel it's necessary or we've got the resources to do so, we could look into a specific complaint. I think that is necessary, because we are still also continuing to regulate social care, and there are sometimes instances where we may need to step in in those cases. So I welcome this clarification, and I think it stops us, as I say, from being overwhelmed.
Yeah. Have you got any preparedness for, because you, let's face it, you will still receive these complaints. We know you're not necessarily there to deal with the complaints, but the complaints are still going to come your way when people realise that's what you're regulating the service, because whether it's lack of understanding or just lack of clarity. So have you got any preparedness to be able to signpost people to the right places to make complaints, is there?
So we're doing work on our complaints policy, our complaints leaflet and information, and we're working to get some comms ready to really clarify that to people.
Is there a threshold that you can make clear? Because clearly there would be some complaints which would raise systemic issues, which would be, you know, relevant to the Care Commission, wouldn't they?
Yes.
So it would be helpful, perhaps, to be, you know, you're going to be, essentially be putting complaints into categories, aren't you? There's one, there's a small number that will be systemic in nature and raise a fundamental issue, and many more which are just to do with the management of service.
Yeah, so I think one of the principles will be that all of the information that members of the public or others indeed share with us is really important information, and it will be absolutely considered in the regulated, the rule that Becky and the team take in regulation. So exactly as you say, there may well be bits of that information that may trigger further inquiry or engagement or indeed other regulatory activity. I think the point just is that, in terms of being the responder to those complaints. So, but the point you make is absolutely critical, that if people share information with us, that is information that we will use, or Becky and the team will use in regulatory assessment or assessment of providers. But it's just that it's really important, as Becky said, that we don't become the place that investigates all those complaints. But your point is well, well-made, that often as you, well, it will always be information that Becky and the team will consider, and the response to it will be depending on what that information says.
Okay. And are you aware of the current hospital complaints process?
Yes.
Do you believe that meets current standards and is currently fit the purpose?
I think that would be difficult for them, again, to comment on. I think to support us from not being overwhelmed, I think it would be beneficial for them to continue comms and making the public aware of the routes in which they go to, to make complaints about the hospital ambulance or mental health services. I think communications about how to make a complaint, the process of that would be continually welcomed.
Moving on to the duty of candour. To what extent will the Care Commission be involved in that duty of candour process?
Well, if you want to talk about the mechanics of it, and then we can talk about the, I mean, the general specific is, of course, it's a, we think it's a really important part of the process, that there is that transparency. We believe it helps build trust, and we think it's really important in terms of how you would operationalise it.
Duty of candour is really important. I think there have been articulated concerns in the press around what this means in legislation and whether it prevents somebody from taking action. Our view is that duty of candour is really important, and it shouldn't prevent people if they wanted to take legal action going forward.
Do you believe that it isn't restricting people, like, as you see it as it's drafted? Do you believe that there is any restriction on somebody taking action if they believe it's necessary?
My view is not. Duty of candour is being open and honest when you've got things wrong, and people do get things wrong in healthcare. So I don't believe it is. I think if you've admitted it, you've made a mistake, you've apologised for that, that shouldn't prohibit you from taking legal action. In my view is, there is no overlap, but they are two different, separate things.
So if somebody has, a service provider has produced a duty of candour letter, would you expect that service provider to also self-report themselves to you as the regulator?
So we have notifiable events, and we've refined those notifiable events. So if there was evidence of harm or somebody had, yeah, sort of made, somebody had made harm, made a mistake, that those events should be reported to us, and we've got a list of notifiable events. And that system is already in place for service providers.
Okay, I think that makes my area of honour.
Thank you. I just had some sort of final questions about preparedness, and I think you've probably answered some of these, but it just gives you an opportunity to add anything. Are you content that you've got sufficient levels of staff to undertake the extra requirements around this particular piece of work?
Yes, we've been well-prepared. In 2022, I worked with the policy leads to map out what resources we would need. We've got staff in place, we've got an inspection methodology, where there will be both the local inspectors, inspectors as well as those off-Ireland. And those people have been in post. They've also been now training, working with other inspectors to understand the local context, as well as working off-Ireland as well, to understand a different inspection methodologies. So we are prepared, and we've been preparing for a number of years.
So you've got a core team on Ireland that you will supplement from people off-Ireland?
Yeah. One of the criticisms we could face is if we used a methodology where you just get external reviewers to come across, the risks of that is people would say, what do they know about Jersey? There's a Jersey context. If we had just local regulators, the criticisms we could face is, well, what expertise do they have? Are they biased? So we would have a blended team to give us the best of both of those worlds. And we've already been doing that in different areas of our inspections already, so children's social care, as well as cancer, et cetera.
And I think you alluded to kind of your work with Isle of Man and potentially Guernsey as well. You said that that was at an early stage of development.
It is. It's not our intent for that, for the hospital ambulance, mental health at this current stage. For those services, we'd be working with the CQC to be able to get those external expertise.
Okay, thank you. And can you, I think you've just provided some information about how you're going to plan to attract local expertise. I think you've got quite a local team already, haven't you?
Yeah, definitely. To point out, one of the criticisms, going back to Deputy Minav's comment, was that the CQC have faced one of the criticisms, is that the inspectors weren't professionally qualified. All of our regulation officers have got a professional qualification, so without social work, learning disabilities, nursing, et cetera. So they've all got a professional qualification.
Okay, thank you. In terms of transitional arrangements, you mentioned at the beginning, one of the issues that CQC had had was around digital and around kind of providers. And you did allude to the fact that you were going to do things a bit differently here. Can you just tell us what you have been doing to prepare service providers?
We've done a lot of preparation. There has been six weekly meetings with the executive leadership team, which has been really beneficial. I think that's established a working relationship where they understand the benefits of regulation. We've done meetings with the doctors, we've done meetings with charitable organisations as well, we've done public consultations. So we've been trying to make sure that we work collaboratively with the whole island in a sense. We understand that actually, the island, this is the only part of our, the hospital is only something that you can describe, that every islander is impacted on. Everybody has been to the hospital, whether it was to be born, whether it was to receive a relative, or whether it was to receive care. So we understand that this is really... So we understand that this is really an important part of regulation. So we are working really hard to get prepared and we're also working with the service provider and other groups to make sure that we're ready as an island for that.
Okay, thank you. I mean, overall, it, it sounds like you're content that there's adequate transitional arrangements in place so that you can kind of hit the ground running when it comes. Is that a fair assessment of what you've said?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
As you know, we're in the budget phase now of the assembly and of course that brings us nicely on to your funding. So the, the new regulations and law is going to adapt that you will propose the funding model on the three to four year cycle to align with the government plan. So are the proposed proposals for funding for the Care Commission the preferred mechanism for, for yourselves?
So we, we do have adequate funding and we have a close working relationship with our finance business partner, so we monitor our finances on a monthly basis. The forecast is tight and for 2026, we believe that we will be within budget in 2027. We need to make sure that we have discussions with our minister that that budget allows us to do our regulatory activity. I believe it will, but we need to just closely monitor that. We did set our budget to be efficient. I think it's really important that we are efficient, just. So as I say, we are making sure we're efficient. We've done it so that we've got inspection methodology that is proportionate as well and we've got a mixed methodology. So we aren't paying for external consultants at huge rates, huge teams. We've got a mixed methodology, so we're making sure we're efficient in that way too. We have reduced our budget and we were asked by the government to reduce our budget as other departments have been, so we have made a reduction of 13%.
So because the hospital services are not going to be charged for inspections, they're not going to be, they're not going to be charged to be regulated in the sense that some of the private providers are being charged for regu-, to be regulated. So I suppose my question is, is do you feel that that is the best methodology for yourselves to operate? Or would you, would you have preferred it that the, you were charging the hospital for the services that you were regulating?
I think the way in which we've structured this allows us to have stable budget control. So I believe that the mechanism of having a funding model set up, so we've got enough to keep us, be able to regulate on a stable basis is appropriate. It allows us to regulate throughout the whole year as well, so we can monitor notifications, et cetera.
I've got just, I've got a couple of questions which, let's just step back a little bit, if you like, to where we were earlier. Is it your expectation that you will inspect services in the current hospital? Or do you think you will not be inspecting services there and you will only be inspecting once we get to the new hospital?
My expectation is that the law will be debated in November. It then goes to the Privy Council and then it returns back to us and we will be inspecting in the, by the end of 2026.
So definitely, okay, that's very clear, thank you. There's been a general criticism that Jersey is overregulated and that we shouldn't be extending regulation into new areas and that this has a cost proliferation and so on. Could you perhaps, Chair, explain why you think that this might be a good exercise for Jersey and good value for money?
Yeah, thank you very much indeed for the question. So I think the, the first part of the answer to this is the approach that states of Jersey have taken to the regulation of, of care and, and health services, which as I say, is very much through the lens of improvement. It's very much, I think it's been evidenced over the initial few years of, of the work that, that the team have done, that that approach is bearing fruit in terms of driving that improvement. In terms of the, the, what, what I perceive, and you know, another former role I had was at the C Q C, inspecting a range of services, including hospitals, ambulance trusts. What I think we can see in the way that this has been thoughtfully put together is the value of regulation in that space. And there are, in, in hospitals of the size of the hospital in Jersey, and I know that all of you know this, and through, as, as we say, some of the external investigations that have taken place, there are risks to the quality of care that are provided in such circumstances. And those risks manifest both in terms of harm to people and, but also in terms of cost. And we believe that the proportionate extension of regulation into the hospital mental health and ambulance services will make a positive contribution, not just to the quality of services, which is clearly of huge importance and to everybody who is either living or visits Jersey, but also to the staff in terms of, of helping them on that constant journey of improvement, which, which again, we think is a real benefit to the proportionate cost of regulation. One of the things that Becky said about the work that she and colleagues have been doing with not just colleagues on the UK but, but internationally is the international challenge for regulation in its entirety to demonstrate not just that it's effective, but that it's cost effective. And, and we certainly, as the Board of Commissioners and I as the Chair, take that challenge incredibly seriously, that the proportionate implementation and of, of the team ensuring regulations and standards are met is something that we take incredibly seriously. On the Board of Commissioners, we've got expertise from previously Wales and Scotland as well as England. We, we take that aspect really seriously, but we genuinely believe that the, the proportionate cost of the extension of regulatory activity, which is, as you've heard, is, is one that has been thought about and budgeted for over a number of years, will, will bear grapefruit over coming years here on Jersey.
Just picking up the issue on cost effectiveness and, and clinical effectiveness. Could you just give us an idea of what kind of measures you have to demonstrate that? Because I think people will see, yes, we need a regulator or no, we don't. And people will also want to understand how will you actually deliver what you've just said, which is value for money, but also this focus on improvement. How will people know that that is actually going to be, you know, an, an investment that's worthwhile?
So it's, it's a, it's a good question and it's one that the world over is a very difficult question to give a really precise answer to, because I think as I alluded earlier on, there are, there are some very tangible things that we would hope to, to achieve through the team in terms of regulation, in terms of, there are things, are you meeting a standard, yes or no? But in terms of driving improvement, some of that is perhaps less tangible, but we can already see it and describe what we think we're seeing and we'll be able to measure, which is how are the services on Jersey assuring themselves, us, you and the public, that they are meeting the standard that, that frankly they're being paid to, to deliver? So there, there is an element of that about it, which is to say, well, you know, we, we want the, the standards of health and care on Jersey to be the highest they possibly can be. How will we know that? Well, what we will need to see is that that is demonstrated using data and information. And I suppose one of the, one of the things that, that some people fear is, you know, well, is regulation just an additional activity that asks for all sorts of, of information from providers that they wouldn't otherwise provide? And what, what Becky and the team are very carefully trying to do is to say, well, look, the same data and information that they, that we're encouraging services to use for their own improvement is the information that we would hope to use in terms of the regulatory activity. So it, in terms of cost effectiveness, part of that will be, I hope that over years, you and we will be able to see that, that, that there is a, the, the hospital and other services can describe and, and, you know, we will be assured collectively that the, the quality of care that's being provided is, is what we expect. At the moment, that's a bit difficult. In terms of a bit of cost to that, we know that, we know that good care without harm is, is, is less expensive than care that produces a lot of harm. But, but as I say, we and regulators the world over find it very difficult to actually describe what, put a pound, shillings and pence on that, other than to try and say, well, look, the cost of the activity, we are absolutely, you know, determined to keep as, as, as low as possible, as proportionate as possible, in order to make sure that we keep seeing and driving those improvements. But it's a very, it's a very difficult question to put pound, shillings and pence on at this stage.
I think, sorry, one of the questions is what, how much does it cost if you haven't got regulation in place? So there is a cost of harm, there's a cost in terms of public trust and scrutiny, so I think.
Where will you get your baseline from? Well, you know, because that's the important thing, isn't it? In terms of trying to pick up your point, Nigel, in terms of, you know, understanding where that improvement is taking place. What is your baseline going to be and, and how will you articulate that to the public?
I think this is a really good question, because at the moment we're considering that. At the moment, we have K P I's which are very data and number driven, so how many inspections have we done, were they on time? But we are now starting to consider what are the outcomes to society that we are benefiting to and we're starting to consider those, that we are thinking about that at the moment. And we haven't got to the end of that current thinking, so at the moment, we're probably going to be changing from internal K P I's to thinking about societal and island outcomes. So we're, we're in that consideration and it's a, it's a policy, new policy thought.
Yeah, are you considering adopting an outcomes based accountability approach?
We are.
Fabulous.
We are, we're considering it. It's quite complex in terms of regulation, so that is something that our Head of Business and I and the Chair and the Board are starting to currently think about.
Because other community providers on the island use that standard, the Children's, Young People Plan, you'll know through the children's social work, work that you do. And again, that gives you that option to, you know, understand the story behind the baseline, you know, you talk common language, which will be really, you know, supportive. And then it's not just the quantity, the quality, but it's actually, is anybody better off?
Yes. And that's something we are considering, yes.
Fabulous.
Any further questions? No, I guess, I mean, the only other point I'd make in terms of the, or want to hear your view on really, in terms of this question of value for money and accountability and so on, is to what extent do you think there's a risk that without this kind of regulatory activity, that we lose our, if one's a better word, competitiveness, you know, in terms of attracting staff, in terms of delivering, reaching the standards which islands might, might expect?
I think not only is there a huge risk of that, but I think what you've seen over recent years is some of those risks turning into issues. And I think, I think both of those are, are, you know, both of those are significant. And, and we very much take the view that actually, that what seems to us to be a natural progression for which both the Commission, but more importantly, perhaps the services have been preparing for some years, you know, we really do think, and as I said, I think we can already begin to sense that even with the, the anticipation of regulation coming in, that we're seeing some improvement in that, in that regard. But I think, I think the point that you raise is really important. And as I said, I think we can see through the work in children's services that, that, that the, the reputation of the service that has improved through the lens of the transparently independent regulator is helping to attract, you know, staff to come and work here, which is, which of course is important as well. So, and that's one of those, you know, things that we're, we're considering, you know, what would, what would an outcome look like? Because some of it is perhaps less, you know, directly attributable and, and that is one of the problems with, with assessing the outcome regulation.
There's just one question I want, sorry, around, this is clearly going to be quite a significant culture shift in terms of the way in which people engage with external perspectives. Can you just talk to us about how you plan to handle that, that kind of, how can I say, reception to, to the inspection framework? I know you said there's been a lot of engagements, but what we found over, certainly over the last couple of years, is that particularly the Royal Colleges have come in and they've done a number of inspections and there have been problems, sort of receiving the messages around that. So my question is really about what's going to be different here with you and how do you plan to, to, to sort of address that kind of culture?
It's a brilliant question and, and culture is, is key. And one of the things that I've been really pleased with so far is that, you know, regulation really impacts behaviour, that's what we're trying to do. So we set a standard and we, we expect people to, to move towards that. The engagement that we've had, I mean, clearly there are, and there will always be, people who are at different stages, but actually, one of the really key bits of work that the Commission is involved with is with the public. And so there, there is a shared need for us all to be transparent about the standard of care that's being provided and, and, and asking people who are providing care to look through the lens of the people receiving it, in terms of the work they do is one of the things that, that we're doing. So I, I have to say, I've, I've been really, really impressed with the engagement that I've been involved with, that, that people are really interested in, you know, what, what does this mean? What are the changes? And, and I think that is the, that's the shift that's already beginning. So in some of the external reports that you referenced, there was, there was comment about people, you know, not wanting to follow internationally accepted standards of care, people not wanting to demonstrate the quality of the services that they're part of through audit, et cetera. That's already beginning to change and, and I, and, and I think that, that's the process that we will be assessing, well, you know, what does that look like on the first set of activities that Becky and the team do? What, what is it that we and the organisations and teams within the organisations can do to support that going forward? But, but that is the fundamental. And as I say, I genuinely, I believe that we are seeing some evidence that that is now beginning to, to accelerate and certainly in the conversations that we've been having with the executive team. We went to, we were invited to one of the Quality and Safety Committee meetings. That's the, the very topics that they're talking about, that they're beginning to work on and that's, I hope, going to be of enormous benefit to islanders.
Thank you.
I think it also depends on how you frame regulation as well. This isn't about catching people out. This isn't about making it worse. That really isn't why we're here. We're here to make it better for islanders. And that's what we've done in terms of our regulation of, of social care sector and also children's social work. We haven't made it worse for those services. We've actually shown them what they're doing really well, as well as the areas of challenges that they already have. And that's the same philosophy and the same regulation methodology we've put in place for the hospital. And that's, as I said, what we're trying to talk to them about is actually, this is what regulation is, it isn't here to catch you out, it isn't here to publicly shame you, this is about showing what you're doing really well and also what the areas of development are. Islanders as well need to have an understanding about what regulation means. I think that they think it might catch people out. Again, we'll be talking to islanders about what regulation means and the benefits of it as well.
Thank you very much. That brings us nicely on to 11 o'clock and so it'd be time now to, to close this hearing. So I'd like to thank you both for your time this morning. And if we have any further questions, we'll follow up.